Thank you. Wanted to acknowledge a great man and a legacy within the East Cleveland School District, Mr. David Pope. He was a teacher for over thirty, thirty-plus years. He had various posts within the school district, but his most recent post was at the Caledonian Elementary School. He had a sickness that, you know, he expired from. But I wanted to let you guys know that the service for him on last Saturday was a grand occasion, I would say. A well-attended service, heartfelt, and we offered our condolences on behalf of the whole entire council. I don't need to read this, but I just wanted to acknowledge such a great man and his legacy within the East Cleveland School District. He taught special education amongst some other job assignments. Also wanted to acknowledge Gregory D. Norman. He was a Shaw High School student that was gunned down on Lakeview about a week and a half ago, almost a week and a half ago. I'm at a moment where I'm tired of burying my students. We have to do better in our community. We have to look after our young people and encourage them to monitor their coming and going, as my heart wants to say. You know, "Watch where you're going and watch who you're with," that's what she would say. But this life was taken by an individual that chose to drive up on him and a young lady and fire him. He was struck, he dropped about a thousand feet away around the corner and ultimately expired on the scene. His life will be remembered by many of the Shaw High School students and his family and, you know, definitely his teachers, me being one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the legislation.
Resolution number forty-six fifteen. Resolution authorizing mayor Jenner into an agreement with McKenna Fitzgerald to settle their lawsuit for one hundred seventy thousand dollars over a six-year period and declaring an emergency requested by law director sponsored by council. President Barbara J. Thomas, please hand the paper to council vice president.
Thank you.
Your sponsor, the vice president, question?
I will sponsor forty-six fifteen and move it down.
Madam chairman, I know that we waived twenty-four hour rule in relation to forty-six fifteen since it is appearing on the agenda.
Move to the main.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Counselor King?
Yeah.
Counselor Martin?
Yeah.
Counselor Baker?
Yeah.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yeah.
Counselor Thomas?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Resolution forty-six fifteen sponsored by you, council president.
Will sponsor forty-six fifteen and move it down.
Second.
I'll sit.
Move to second. Any discussion?
First of all, the law director and the attorney for the plaintiff, she's the plaintiff. The plaintiff has come out with a settlement and it has been made something that we could live with less than what it was. I think that basically there should be discussion in this process and also hearing from the law directors. Thank you, Madam Law Director.
If I may, if you recall, this was a situation that occurred in two thousand twelve in which two police officers that are no longer witness shot at a unarmed young lady. And this was a very egregious situation. And my predecessor, Mr. Director Lionel Riley, was put to the task of defending it. However, on October seventeenth, two thousand fourteen, it was generalized, the jury returned a verdict against us of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. This verdict was one that was inherited by me when I came into the position. And we immediately began to appeal it with the Court of Appeals. However, it was too little, too late. And the Court of Appeals said that we were just too late in our efforts to try to reverse the situation. We should have come in earlier with our appeal. So we were backed against the wall and we've been trying different approaches to appeal under different theories all spring and all summer. And finally, we got the denial in July. And so after that, we felt we had to pretty much capitulate when we got the call that, you know, they were considering reducing the amount. Then we went into negotiations about how much to reduce the amount, the exact details of reducing the amount. And we still had indemnification for the two police officers that even though we didn't condone what they did, it still fell to us since they were city employees. And so we had that hanging over our heads. So finally, we did say late July that we would agree to one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. However, that was with Mike Pachowski, who's also a union attorney. It took another couple of weeks to get Attorney John Spelacy on board because he didn't agree with Mike's agreement to settle. So I've been negotiating with him in order to get him on board. He was very skeptical because we were thrown out several times to the Court of Appeals. Every tactic we made was denied. And then he had a judgment for two hundred and seventy thousand and all he had to do was file a judgment leaning against us and just take our general fund. And so in order to avoid that and so that we could keep the two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, we continued to correspond and communicate with Attorney John Spelacy. And I guess we cried broke so much that he finally reluctantly agreed to reduce his verdict a hundred thousand dollars. And he came out with this. As soon as I got it, this settlement, I sent it to Mrs. Udrih, which was late this afternoon. I didn't even know she had had an opportunity to bring it off. And so we did not get the ultimate settlement from the attorney in terms of the detail until late this afternoon. And so that's why I have to apologize for the late conveyance of this to the council. But when I got it, you got it through the council floor.
Madam Law Director? Got a couple of questions. Number one, when back when, we asked for a list of all the litigation. And this was in that packet?
Yes.
We also discussed the litigation that was taking place and this was in that pack?
Absolutely.
So this is nothing new that is coming forward to us at the last minute, only the settlement. And I am commending you for bringing it down from two hundred and seventy thousand dollars down to what we have here. And a question was asked by Ms. Walcott, where and what line item are we going to get this money? Is there an area for paying the litigation? Could you please explain that to us?
I don't know the number, but I know that that pot of money does exist. I just don't know what line item number exactly Director Johnson uses in order to pay out the...
The litigation?
Yeah.
Okay.
The situation.
So we will have the money to pay out this on the schedule that is in this, in this. Because it's going to be, am I correct, put aside and is ongoing for the, what is it, twenty-five thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay. And also, I just wanted to let everybody know that if you know and what's going on when I ask for litigation, it was there. This is not something that is new. It is not something that is an emergency thing, but it is a wonderful thing when we get something negotiated down as opposed to being threatened and held to two hundred and seventy thousand versus someone making arrangement for us to pay it on a payment basis. Not that you might get it on a payment basis, but right now, we have an agreement between the two lawyers that we have. So I would not dare to say that this is something that was just thrown at us because it wasn't. It was all along, if you look at the litigation and deal with the litigation and keep the papers. And take heed to the business at hand on what we're doing and how we looked at it. And basically, it was us that asked for the litigation for the period of time that it came through. And all of us should remember when they stood up and shot at the woman, police and all of that.
My concern is that we were just told by the mayor that we got cut one hundred and sixty thousand dollars and we used eighteen police officers and shut down the service department. And you say we got twenty-five thousand dollars extra. Is this right here?
You did say we had fifty, twenty-five thousand dollars extra papers and there's a fund that you paid the litigation out of. Now, the law director is saying that. There is a fund that you paid the litigation out of. Now, wait a minute, just one minute. I'm going to respond to that also. The last time we had something going, the mayor said, "Oh, I'm gonna lay off all the police."
Sure is.
And that was last year. "We're gonna do this, we're gonna do that." He didn't lay all the police off, okay? But, and I didn't get a notice in writing from the mayor stating, "Council president, rest of the council, this is what is going to take place." I have no documentation to that effect. So all I'm saying is that oral is nothing to me until he brings it forth and set it on this table and gives it to us in black and white and documentation.
The two officers named in this document, the litigation started or the discharge happened in two thousand twelve, correct? Yeah, I believe they were discharged same year. Yeah, they were. All right, so two thousand twelve and we're looking at now, the year is two thousand fifteen, correct? We approximately probably saved their salaries since they've been going there in the amount that the judgment is issued in. So if you don't understand that much, what it would have cost to keep those two here from two thousand twelve to current is probably in a sum of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars or, you know, even more, give or take. I don't see how we don't have this money sitting somewhere anyway because those are two less employees out of the two hundred something employees at the time. Those are two less. So I made a statement last week. I said if we're down to, what did they say yesterday, a hundred and seventeen? How many employees we have?
Hundred and seventeen.
A hundred and seventeen, correct, yeah. Hundred and seventeen employees, down from two hundred plus employees when we started with the city. Kasich only took about, what, two millions, three million in local government funds across the board from every city? And then you weigh in probably revenue losses to income tax law or closure of a tax department. We've laid off about, wow, about forty employees or more, terminations, resignations. I'm not seeing where we have not saved the money. It's just not adding up. Then we had the sale of this cell tower, then we had the acquisition sales of the Noble Road, the Eddie Road, Cleveland Clinic money. Give me about two months, I'm telling you, I'm going to show you something different that you guys need to see because if you guys won't say that something is not lining up with this, then somebody has to because it's not adding up. We should have some reserve cash somewhere to pay our litigation right out the door. I don't mind, I don't mind this payment setup. This is definitely a good thing for the city, you know, considering our circumstance. However, all the rest of the money is not lining up. Because if need be, if the twenty-five thousand dollars per month was not there, I should be able to transfer it from what should still be there. So when I was told in front of the fiscal commission about Irene Crowe saying, you know, "All the bills are paid." You know, I'm sick of the lies around here. Madam Law Director, you are, I'm crediting you basically on your resume and what you've done in your life. I hope that we're not being lied to in this regard because over time, we were lied to about so many things, including not having, you know, any bills. Because if we didn't have any bills, we would still have the eight million or how many ever million dollars came in through the Cleveland Clinic money and other properties that were sold, traffic tickets, the court deposits. Whatever the court deposits were, one month, they were a hundred thirty something thousand dollars in court deposits. When Chief Spox was here, we're just talking to him today. Counsel, I just want you guys to know that you just can't be fed anything and just take it for what it is. Not particularly referencing per se this particular legislation, but these two employees are no longer on our books. The money that it would have took to pay them, that should have been going to, that should be still somewhere, ready to go to the lawsuit if we were fiscally responsible in managing the city properly and not trying to dig it into the dirt.
Amen.
Yes. So if I'm understanding this correctly, this lawsuit started in two thousand twelve?
Yeah, I was here, I was prosecuted then, I wasn't monitored.
And the young lady or the people listed on here in question were not physically harmed?
No, they fired into the car. Fired at the car. The car tried to, no, the car tried to, it went in dry, reversed. I've been a police officer before. The argument was is that when you start to use your car as a weapon, what action can a police officer take? And the action that the police officer at that time chose to take was to fire at the car, ultimately still having to arrest the individual because that enters into what the fleeing, you know, standard. You know, she's trying, you know, avoid arrest or avoid police intervention. So when he fired into the car, I guess whatever she thought that she could get off of a lawsuit against the city for being fired upon, she thought she was correct and the court ultimately thought she was correct through some slip of some type of legal statute that she found.
Use of deadly force.
And the use of deadly force, having not been harmed, but use of deadly force and the fact that we didn't have a responsive, if that's the correct word to use, community. We didn't have a responsive law department at the time to be timely about the business of the city worrying about what we doing down here on council. I would have preferred that you save us a hundred, two hundred something thousand dollars.
Yeah, so you know what was heard, it started two thousand twelve. Now, the finance director, did he identify where this money is coming from?
I don't know the line item, but I know there's a pool of money for litigation.
Okay, for litigation?
Yeah, I don't know the numbers.
Litigation payments or litigation to go to court? Paid the payout or? Have the fiscal supervisors, have they seen it?
They're aware, they're aware of the proposed settlement.
And the payment term, so we gotta come up with twenty-five thousand like in a couple of days. And they're, they've seen that and they're okay with that.
It's been presented to this attorney.
You're right on, I agree.
I just, I want to make sure because again, the finance director is not here.
Right.
And I, I would hate to suggest, but we may, we may need to, we may need to put this on the same slate with the fiscal recovery plan so that we can talk to the finance director just to get a grasp of where this money is coming from. And that's it, thank you.
Yes. Government is about process and procedure and law is about common sense. Now, we got this today, we've been dealing with this for two years. Two years, we got it today. We ask on a regular basis about what's going on with litigation and half the time, nobody's here to respond. Now, we say we're broke. The fiscal commission's been here over a year now. We have a very paramount issue here about where the money is going to come from. But the finance director is not here to answer. Come on. There's a respect issue here. It's like we got, it's like what's been happening so many years up here, we get it at the last minute. You explain it, it ain't your fault. Number one, I've talked with a number of the law directors and I've said, there's a number of cases that have come before you should have settled. But if they're told to fight them, they fight them. This place, this situation is so blatant, they're shooting at an unarmed lady. And it was in the news. Leans. Negotiations. Everything's negotiated. You want that from your lawyers. We had a case here with one of our employees that I told the law director, I said, "You're not going to make the case" because there was a contract entered into by this individual and the city didn't honor the contract. So instead of doing the right thing and could have saved some money, they fought it. They fought it and fought and they still lost. Okay, that's why all these leans. John Spelacy is not really doing us a favor, he's trying to get paid because we are broke. He knows that if anybody reads the paper, we don't have the money. Now, all of a sudden, we can come up with twenty-five thousand dollars to pay this lawsuit. And I like the fact that we're saving a hundred thousand dollars, but that's because the money's not there. So I'm looking at this and I'm looking at this objectively and probably in the long run, we'll probably end up voting in favor of it because it's saving a hundred thousand dollars. But we should have sat down and as a committee as a whole or in a committee, health and safety, maybe whatever, and discussed this, not in the public, this is not the form to have these kind of discussions. That's why we have committees. Gary Norton, here we got another important issue. Where is it? I was drinking some Pepsi? I mean, I'm just being straight with you, okay? You know, I'm tired of, I guess after sixteen years of this Ms. Walcott and this gun being put against her head at the last bit, I'm tired of this kind of stuff, okay? This should have been held off till we had the time to discuss it, to tweak it, to have the finance director to say where the money... We're not supposed to have any, when we're going twenty-five thousand dollars, we ain't got no money. We don't show the council meetings, because we ain't got no money. So where the money coming from? If the fiscal commission that you meet with Barbara saying we ain't got no money, where are we getting the money from? They've looked at everything, they've looked at all the line items. They've looked at money for litigation and all that other stuff. And this ain't the, this ain't the only one that we're going to be paying. So it bothers me that we get this and we're going to vote on it. Willie Hemus is a good person, but she don't know where the money is coming from. We don't have nobody here to answer it. We're dealing with something important in the sacred city, a hundred thousand, where is the mayor? I was drinking a Pepsi? Come on. You don't do business like this, you don't do it. You guys can vote, but I'm voting against it because there's a respect issue here that bothers me. We're disrespecting too much. We're disrespecting. Disrespect. Disrespect, okay? Okay, don't cut me off, I'm not through yet. All right. So this bothers me and it's been going on too long, just past Saturday, when I want to get into that, that bothered me. I took my Saturday because my heart was doing the right thing and we couldn't get a call. Okay, we're getting this kind of stuff at the last minute, we're supposed to operate through committees. So I can't vote for it. Give us our respect that we got coming. The rest of y'all do what y'all want to do.
That's, that's, that's...
For my learned colleague, I don't have the gavel. Number one, I have the right to make a remark, so I wasn't about to cut you off, okay? So please refrain from...
Refrain from what?
From telling me that, "Don't cut you off," because I didn't have the gavel and I wasn't, that was not my intention. But what I'm fixing to say, we don't have to go through a whole lot of... I want to say the right thing, a lot of conversation. If you're not going to vote for something, then don't vote for it. And we've had discussion and if we're not going to deal with it, let's not deal with it. That's what your prerogative is as legislators, not to deal with it, not to vote for it. If you want to table it, you do that. And that's all I'm saying, it's a waste of time to hold a whole lot of conversations when all we have to do is say we haven't had the opportunity to deal with it and this is the way we want to deal with it. We want to put it in a committee and we want to do it this way. That's all I'm saying.
Are you saying it's a waste of time for me to voice my opinion?
No, I did not say it's a waste of time for us to... That's what I said.
Let's call a roll, please.
What do we call it? What do we vote?
Voting to table it.
I haven't heard a motion to table.
What was the motion? What was the motion up there?
You need to make a motion, there was no motion to vote, you need to make a motion to table it.
I'd like to make a motion to table this legislation, resolution forty-six fifteen. First payment isn't due till the fifteenth, so if we can make a motion to table it and have a meeting for this and the financial recovery plan and have the finance director there, I'd like to make a motion to table it.
First, first very do that you've, the financial recovery plan is not on the table.
Right now, we're voting, right now, you want to table forty-six fifteen.
I second the table. I second the table.
Move to second. Call a roll.
Counselor King?
Yeah.
Counselor Martin?
Yeah.
Counselor Baker?
I'll stand.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yeah.
Counselor Thomas?
Yeah.
It'll be tabled.
Did you get a second on that?
Are you still... All right, we've tabled it.
All right. We're going to go to executive session.
Going into the executive session.
Repetitive litigation.
I move that we go into executive session.
It's a vote.
Let me take that. Counselor King?
Wait a minute, to discuss litigation.
Pending litigation.
Tending litigation, that's the reason why we go into the executive session.
Concerning the Rida Man Davis against counsel. Counselor King?
Yea.
Counselor Martin?
Yea.
Counselor Baker?
Yea.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yea.
Counselor Thomas?
Yea.
Going into executive, microphone's going off.
Is it, the other employees that you're going, you can't go into executive?